I'm going to call this meeting to order tonight, October 7, 7:00 PM. If you stand for a salute of the nation's flag. Tonight in attendance are supervisors Fisher, Agizio Savavik, Cassiola, Fleer. In addition Township Manager Don Januso, Planning Director and Assistant Township Manager Jack King, Chief of Police Sean Bakavinsky, Director of Public Works Bill Bodorf, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Attorney Gretchen Moore. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd ask everybody to take a moment of silence. One of our longtime Public Works employees Danny Wasick passed away on September 29th of this year. He was a wonderful employee and wonderful to work with, and I just think we owe him a minute of respect to say goodbye and thank you for the things that he did. At this time, we're going to open it up for citizens' comments. Comment will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Oh, she's okay. Okay. I won't read the announcements to you. Is Jill Shook here? Do you want me to call her out?
Yeah.
Jill, are you here? Oh, there you are. You're hiding. I couldn't quite see you. Do you want to talk for a second about the Jack-o'-lantern jog? Or, I can. I can read it if you don't want me to put you on the spot. Sorry. Sure, please. Thank you. Uh, the one at the podium. Yeah. Is it on? Sorry, hang on, it's not on. Sorry about that.
My name is Jill Shook. I'm a resident of Muse, but, and a retired teacher from Cannon McMillan School District, actually graduated from Cannon McMillan School District also. I'm here only to thank whoever put our signage up on your sign about the Jack-o'-lantern jog. I know that we have someone that's giving us some inside help from Cecil Township, the chief of police and his wife. They're bringing the information back because Sandra did join our committee. We are the Scholarship Foundation of Cannon McMillan. This is our 15th annual Jack-o'-lantern jog. If you've never been to a jog, you want to come to this one. Because along with a 5K race and a one-mile stroll, we have probably 150 Chinese auctions gifts to be raffled off. So, I invite you to come just to visit. It's at the high school cafeteria. The race begins at 9:00. It's through Cannonsburg, and last year we had close to 400 runners. And this is one of the ways we make our money, to give scholarships to our graduating seniors. So, I invite you to come just to look and to browse, and if you do have any further questions. Everyone here, Frank knows how to get in touch with me, Sean knows how to get in touch with me, and I can answer your questions for you. And Tom does too. Sorry, Tom, I didn't see you. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't read the announcements to you, but I will call out the Bingo by Cecil, Number Three Ladies Auxiliary on Sunday, October 20th, doors open at 11:00. And the Trail of Treats on October 26th from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at Cecil Park and Miller's Run Road. We'll start with 166, 2019. Consider setting a date for a public hearing to be held for rezoning application 2019-19 for Cannonsburg Supply and Equipment. Location 1, intersection of Shafoni Road at O'Hare Road. Rezoning 3.4 acres from R2 to C3. Location 2, 1710 and 1718 980 Road. Rezoning 20.8 acres from R1 to C3. Applicant Fred Dalbo, Cannonsburg Supply and Equipment.
Members of the board, this application was made and reviewed by the Planning Commission. As you can see on the map above you here, location number one is a portion of ground that's just outside of Muse. It's on Shafoni Road, and that's location number one. Location number two is another piece of property that's owned by Mr. Dalbo that's off of 980. It's been used, at least the piece along 980's been used as a commercial business for some time, and recently, I think it was a welding supply store. But the Planning Commission reviewed both of these, both of these applications for each one of these properties, which is to take them from their current zoning state to be rezoned as C3. And they looked at it one month, they brought it back the second month, and they talked about it again. They talked about it in, in reference to the new comprehensive plan map that's not been approved, but that's on the table. But it was still their recommendation at this time that, that this not be rezoned. So, I believe at this time, it's the board's decision whether you want to set up a hearing and listen to this on their own, listen to this on your own, or pass on this. So, I think that's the decision tonight.
We want to set a date then for that hearing?
If it's the board's desire. I think Gretchen-
I'm asking. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Do we want to set a hearing date for that?
Yes.
Okay. Any dates that you guys want to pick?
Probably should be a separate date and not before a meeting.
Agreed. Monday night seemed to work though for us. Do we want to set it for-
Second Monday?
Of November?
Yeah.
November 11th? Okay. So, we'll set it for 11:11 at 7:00 PM. Does that work?
That's Veterans Day.
Oh, right, that is Veterans Day. Can we do the 18th? 11:18, Kukora, at 7:00 PM. Okay. 1, 7:00 PM. 167, 2019. Consider the first release of financial security posted for the installation of public improvements for Windsor Woods Phase 6B from 1.248, 466, 8, to 875,975 dollars and 25 cents, a total reduction of $372, 372,490 dollars and 75 cents, as recommended by the Township Engineer.
This is for the final phase of Windsor Woods. This is their first recommendation, or their first request for release. We would recommend that the release be issued. If there's any questions.
So, move if we release that one?
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 168, 2019. Consider the 11th release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for the McConnell Trails. Phase 1 from 603,239 dollars and 45 cents to 537 dollars and 30, 537,030 dollars and 95 cents, a total reduction of 66,208 dollars and 50 cents, as recommended by the Township Engineer.
So, as, as it relates to this particular item, it was brought up at the last meeting about the issue of the main entrance to this plan. This, that I just put up here is, this is McConnell Road, right here going left to right. This is the new entrance into the plan. The Township ordinances call for a 25-foot radius, and that's what the developer put in for this plan. He put in a 25-foot radius, which is in red. What's happened is that the vehicles, due to the geometry of this road and the, and the narrow width of this road, have been cutting this short on either direction. I've reviewed this with Andy Hutchinson, who's in the audience tonight, if you have any questions, but he's going to widen these two radius points out in sufficient width that they will accommodate all vehicles that want to turn into the plan. So, it's a, it's a slight modification, but I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. It's not on the agenda. This will just be a field change, but I know there's been questions asked.
How much wider is that, Dan?
Uh, we're going from a 25 to a 35-foot radius, so it's approximately 10 feet.
That should work.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, that's just a, that should be taken out of that letter. I'm sorry, Tom. I just should say public. It's public improvements.
Not private.
Sorry about that.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. 169, 2019. Consider the award of adaptive signal upgrades for South Point Boulevard traffic signals in the amount of 393,142 dollars and 80 cents, and the alternative bid of 132,417 dollars and 30 cents, for a total of 525,000, 560 dollars and 10 cents to Traffic Control and Engineering Company.
So, I asked Mike Haberman to be here tonight to give the board an update on this project. If you recall, this is the Greenlight Go money that was applied for a couple years ago for upgrades to the signals at South Point, along South Point Boulevard. There was a grant, and then there was a match that was required. SPOA 1 and SPOA 2 have provided a little over $100,000 match on the project. And I'm going to let, I don't want to steal all of Mike's thunder, but we took bids again, and he can give you the recap.
All right, just, so, just to refresh everybody's memory, this was a Greenlight Go grant application that was submitted, close to three years ago. Took about nine months for Penda to award the grants, another handful of months to go through the agreement process. Then there was the three-party agreement between the Township and SPOA 1 and SPOA 2. We then went into the design process. We originally bid the project in the spring of this year. The grant was set to expire at the end of June of this year. As a result of the timing and as a result of changes in technology from the time we did the app, the application to today, or when we bid it the first time, we only received one bid, and the contractor for that bid included a, an adaptive system that didn't meet the spec. So, it was, it's a new manufacturer that was trying to break into PA. The capabilities of their system didn't meet the requirements that we had specced the program, so the bid was, was invalid. Okay. So, we then went, went and met with SPOA 1, SPOA 2, and started the process of trying to figure out when we can rebid this, how we can rebid it, to make sure we get a responsible bid, and to make sure that we're getting a bid that's reasonable and that falls within the grant amounts or as close to it as possible. When we went through the process internally, we started looking at some of the systems that are available and updating our cost estimates to see where things were going to land. And we were expecting costs to come in, you know, anywhere from 150 to 200,000 dollars higher than what the, the grant amount was for, depending on the system that was purchased. So, we worked with a couple of different manufacturers, we worked with contractors. We rebid the project as a base bid and an alternate, alternate bid based on our estimates, hoping that, you know, we would at least get the base bid work done, which would be for five of the signals, and then potentially could expand to the other two signals, either with another grant application or in the future as a different project. So, we bid it as an alternate, just in case, to see what the numbers came in at. And we ended up getting, six contractors picked up the package, only two bid it. It's the two that are essentially bidding all of the traffic signal work in western PA. And the, well, the system that, that they specced out, or that they included in their bid meets all of the specs. It's a system that's been used in this southwestern Pennsylvania, and they're very competitive. And because it was a competitive project and we had, and we got a year extension on the grant, we ended up getting a total amount for the base bid and the alternate bid that was only slightly over the total, the total grant amount. So, at this point, we're, you know, our recommendation is, let's go forward with the whole project. It's a good contractor, it's a responsible bid, it's a good system, and we're just a little bit higher than what the grant amount was. This, what you're seeing on the total here was that the total bid was from Traffic Control and Engineering, 525,000, 560 dollars and 10 cents. The total grant amount for construction was 491,000, a little over 491,000. The local match required per the grant agreement was 100, a little over 104,000, which was already paid and split by SPOA 1 and SPOA 2. 386,000 coming from the grant. So, it's a little over 34,000 that, that's short, you know, from, from the base bid and the alternate bid combined, which we think our recommendation is to move forward with it, the whole project as one today.
What two were not included, or what two would be out if the alternate isn't accepted?
The way we did the base bid is, we were going to do the, the five to the south, so Technology North, Technology South, Consol, yeah, all the way down to, to Morganza, and then the two at the north, so Corporate and the I-79 southbound ramps, we're going to be the alternate.
These two are the alternate up here, Tom. The two to the north.
It lent itself to that because we need, because of the distance between Corporate and Technology North, we need to get a repeater pole with a radio on it to be able to communicate because of the topography. So, that, that lent itself to, to the, to a break in the, in the base bid to the alternate bid.
So, there's nothing to do with the concern the Penda has about traffic backing up on 79 getting off that exit?
No.
There's nothing to do with that?
No, the system itself, the adaptive system, I mean, I don't, I think I've presented it, at least in the past, but the, the adaptive system, the technology today, what happens in a corridor like South Point Boulevard is, there's so much change in tenants and who's in what building and where they are and what, and the types of tenants that are in those buildings. And the traffic fluct, the traffic fluctuates not only daily, but maybe month to month, depending on what's happening down there. There's events, things like that. When you, with the technology that's out there today, you can time these signals and just give them parameters for each one of the intersections. They're not, they don't talk to each other. They're essentially isolated intersections, and they operate how you tell them to. The adaptive system actually is a program that's in the controller. It's their cameras, and it's real-time. So, it actually adjusts the timings of each signal. They talk to each other, they adjust their timings throughout the day on a real-time basis, based on the actual traffic patterns.
So, you're saying because, because those two aren't clustered near those other five, they don't quite need to talk together, talk with each other?
Ideally, ideally for the whole corridor, it's going to be most efficient when they do all talk, but because there's a big enough of a gap between those two, if there, if it made sense to sever it anywhere, that's where it made sense.
All right, but I, we, talking to Penda official, they're always talking about the worry about broken taillight glass on 79, meaning at the South Point intersection where it's backing up. That's, if, if those were two of the five and not two being considered as the alternative, would that help that circumstance, the backup on 79?
This system absolutely will help that situation.
But I'm just saying, according to Penda, that's the most critical area we have, is the interchange right there for-
I mean, we're pleased with the results. We were worried it was going to be, we're asking the Township to spend the 35,000 because if this, up until this point, the Township's not had to include any funds.
Okay, I understand, and I just, I thought those are the two critical, I thought those that have been the original, in the original five.
It's just as critical at the Morganza end, albeit it's not a ramp from I-79, but the, but the volumes and the traffic patterns and volumes down there are just as heavy, if not heavier, as they are up at the north.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was, was the motion for the alternate also?
Yes. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. 170, 2019. Consider the request of J&amp;D Properties for the acceptance of a portion of Windance Drive and Pinion Court, subject to the Solicitor's review of the deed of dedication and waiving the requirement for the maintenance bond as requested by, by the developer.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to this, should we have had the 34,000 listed in that last motion? That was the-
We can provide the, we'll make sure the detail is provided with that motion.
We'll just include that 34,000. It's not in that motion.
I talked to the Solicitor, though. She said we can attach, we'll just attach the detail with a minute.
Thank you.
Sorry. Consider the request of J&amp;D Properties for the acceptance of a portion of Windance Drive and Pinion Court, subject to the Solicitor's review of the deed of dedication and waiving the requirement for the maintenance bond as requested by the developer.
Yeah, this, this project has been installed for several years. The final wearing course is down. There's been inspections completed. Mr. Donardo made the request for the acceptance of this portion of the road, which will take it from Profio Road all the way back to the piece that's already accepted. So, this would complete out the main road acceptance within the plan, with the exception of Phase 3 that we still have that portion yet to be accepted. So, I, I asked Joe to be here tonight if there were any questions from the board, and you have a copy of his letter with the request, so.
Do you have a call?
I drive that a quick, good bit. It looks like it's all pretty good shape.
Yeah, it's, the road's, the road's in good condition.
Yeah.
Do I have any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. 170, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is there something you wanted to say about that?
I'm Joseph Donardo. I'm, what is the status of the road at this point?
I guess it would remain in your custody at this point. The board did not, unfortunately, I don't feel comfortable making that second, although I agree with taking it over. I live on that street, so I'm, I'm going to personally abstain from this, but you would have-
Well, I, I guess the board, just for, for, for Mr. Donardo's edification, I mean, there's a developer's agreement that requires the Township to take over. He has asked for the waiver of the maintenance bond. Is that something the board would consider with the maintenance bond?
How long was the maintenance bond for?
18 months. The road's been in for four years. That's, that's why he made the request for the waiver. I mean, there's, there have been no maintenance issues there. It was reviewed by Bill Bodorf before tonight's meeting. I think Bill was comfortable with it.
You okay with it, Bill?
That's what I was going to ask you, Dan. You had, you mentioned on, on your report what, other than you said it was in good shape, I didn't know anything about the year, years it was there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was completed in 2015. The final wearing course was down, so it's just been sitting there since then.
I, I just may make a comment on that. I apologize for the, for the length of time that expired. I thought this was already, already accepted. And I was notified by my office that we're actually still being taxed on the road right away. So, I'm not even sure if the Township has access to the liquid fuel funds right now as a result of the, the formality of the public right away.
Acceptance.
You know, I, I think it's, it probably would be in the interest of the Township, I would think, you know, from liquid, liquid fuel funds perspective to finalize it. Then the other question I have is that-
Let me, let me put it up. Now that that's kind of been explained, let me see. Ron, does your motion hold?
Sure.
Do I have a second now?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, so now it passes. Thank you. Without. Yeah. Thank you. 171, 2019. Consider as past practice setting Thursday, October 31st, as the date for trick-or-treat in Cecil Township from the hours of 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. If you're participating, please leave your porch light on. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes 5-0. 172, 2019. Consider engaging the services of Cohen Law Group for the purpose of negotiating contract renewal for the Comcast franchise agreement at a proposed cost of 12,420. Don, do you want to explain that, or do you want me to, or Gretchen can?
Sure. So, Dan Cohen and his group, this is pretty much all they do, is these franchise negotiations, and they're up on the law, and they've kind of really cornered the market in this area. So, you know, I would recommend that you engage their services. It's probably going to be the best bang for your buck to do a renewal on this. A lot of times, they can save the Township's some money or find some monies for the Township. If, if it's something you'd want your regular Solicitor to do, we'd have to get up to speed, and I think you'd probably be paying just as much anyway. So, I, I'd recommend you utilize someone. They kind, they're an expertise in this area.
Does everybody understand why we're renewing our contract, our franchise agreement with Comcast?
What else is negotiable, Gretchen, other than the, the franchise fee itself, the percentage, which I know we're at the max?
Yeah, so if you guys are at your max, that's one issue. I'm not sure what else is negotiable, but, you know, they know all the ins and outs of these agreements. I'm just not comfortable doing it.
Don, do you know what, what, what else could be in that agreement? What could change in that?
No, I mean, we are at the maximum for the franchise limit. They, as part of their review, they also perform an audit to make sure that over the past years during the franchise agreement, that the funds that were supposed to be dispersed to the Township were, were correctly and adequately accounted for.
How extensive, and like, how far, when they say they'll do an audit?
They go back from the beginning, for the length of our franchise agreement, I believe it's five years.
That might be worthwhile right there.
Just for the audit?
And actually, they did perform our last, they acted on behalf of the Township in the negotiation of our last franchise agreement. That's what I wanted to hear. It was probably close to that, yes, Tom, yeah. They, they, it was in that neighborhood, it's probably, I want to say 10,000, close to 10,000 dollars, but they did negotiate our last contract, our last franchise agreement.
So, they, they negotiated at the highest rate? Or were it-
They did, but, yeah, there is a limit to that, and we are at that highest, that highest rate.
Is there anyone else we could use, Gretchen?
I'm personally not familiar with another group that does this. I know, you know, Dan Cohen, they do it almost exclusively.
When does this have to be done?
Before the end of the year, right?
I mean, it expires the end of the year, the sooner the better. It'll just continue with the same terms until you decide to renew it.
Would it, would it be worth it for the board to, for Gretchen to investigate to find another or so?
That's more for her to do.
Yeah. So, do I have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0. 173, 2019. Consider the certification of the 2020 MMO for the police pension plan at 474,993 dollars. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0. 174, 2019. Consider the certification of the 2020 MMO for the non-uniform pension plan at 273,188 dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5-0. 175, 2019. Consider the resignation of Bonnie Cowden from the Cecil Township Parks and Recreation Board. Letters of interest to serve on this board should be submitted to Donald A. Januso, Township Manager. I'm just going to add, prior to our November 4th Board of Supervisors meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. 176, 2019. Consider authorizing the Township Manager to advertise for the position of laborer in the Cecil Township Public Works Department.
Wait a minute, Bill, don't you need a driver? Don't you need a driver instead of a laborer?
They, they work as drivers, Ron. If you work at, at any classification above, or you're around, you're paid for that rate. So, our laborers during the winter time, they drive, they're paid, they're paid the drivers rate. We bring them in at the laborers' rate, and at some point, we'll, there's an open, we'll promote them into those positions. We bring everybody into the laborers' rate.
Is there going to be a CDL requirement?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 177, 2019. Consider authorizing the Director of Public Works to begin the process of promoting to the position of foreman within the Cecil Township Public Works Department.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 178, 2019. Consider the general fund invoices for, from September 1st through September 30- Consider the general fund invoices for, from September first through September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. I'll make that motion. Do I have a sec? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
No.
Do you have a question?
No, I just said no.
Oh, you, I'm sorry. So, four one. I apologize. Administrative reports, engineers' report. Dan?
Uh, nothing additional. You have my report. The Traditions of America Project, uh, there was a kickoff meeting last week, a, uh, a, uh. A pre-construction meeting related to Traditions of America, which is the three hundred and forty-six unit development, uh, over off of Han Road. Uh, so that's, that's a good sign, they're ready to go on that, and.
Yeah, it's seven hundred and fifty people there.
Yeah, they, they had a, a, I guess they had a party or something that they were introducing people to the plan, so I'm sure that's gonna go very fast. Uh, that's probably the biggest, the biggest item to report on last month, other than normal items in my report. Oh, I did, Cinni, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
There was one other item that I did wanna bring up and get the board's input. We, the, we had been asked about the Poly Road and the intersection there, and as it relates to the Windsor Woods project. And, um, so. So we developed the plan, gotta zoom in here a little bit to make it more clear.
I need my glasses.
In conjunction with Bill, um, and, uh, Bill Barroff, and, uh, Ron Flair was out with us the day we arrived in the field. Uh, we took a look at North of Poly. The developer had committed of Windsor Woods. If you recall, that development was done as a previously approved P R D., so we had nothing formally that we could require him to do at this intersection, but he did volunteer to improve this intersection here, to push the road over and do about the first fifty feet of the road, and then taper this back in. And looking at the project more comprehensively, and, uh, the, the road can be widened to twenty-four feet, the intersection pushed over, it would scale back to twenty-two feet here, uh, it goes to twenty-one as it comes through the tunnel, and then, uh, it would, I think we maintained twenty-one the whole way out. I'm looking at Joe and Bill to shake their head. Uh, there's some drainage improvements that need to be completed here, uh, along the road. We need a couple easements to take care of those, but this is the comprehensive plan for improvement to the road. Uh, the developer, uh, has committed, uh, to doing one of two things. He'll either, uh, make his part of the improvement down here, or, uh, he'll contribute twenty thousand dollars that he's committed, uh, plus he gave us the surveying, and he paid for the, uh, the engineering of this plan. Uh, or, uh, you know, or we wait and, uh, get some of this other work done, uh, and next year, we bid this as a part of the road program, because Bill wants to pave the road all the way up to, uh, to, uh, King Edward, uh, up to the entrance to Windsor Woods. And it's my understanding, too, that Range Resources may be available to do part of this work, so I just wanted to let the board know we had a comprehensive plan, and, um, if, if you agree that we should wait to do it comprehensively in the spring of next year, it makes most sense. So if you did get asked questions, there is a plan for it.
Dan, is it, is there a, is that staying entirely within the township right away, not infringing on that piece of property?
Everything's within the right of way. We have to do a little driveway adjustments here, but that's normal. The only place where we would be taking an easement would be just to get this drainage into this property, across this property and into the water course here and here.
All right, uh. I have one thing to add, just to give you a spot. Tomorrow, I've coordinated with South Bed for their, uh, bucket truck down there. We're gonna take those trees out, the railroad overpass down there, and we're gonna dig a couple of, actually, a couple of test holes there, determine, to try to determine copper footing of that railroad apartment, to see that, to determine if we have the room to widen that through the trestle. It appears that we do.
Right.
Uh, we'll do some test holes tomorrow. I'll do it in conjunction with some, uh, from South Bed to determine that. The one hall, the one call that has cleared, this preliminary investigation work must be performed before we proceed with the, uh, with the design network.
Right, and the, and the other part of this is, there's two, two Verizon poles that need to be moved, so that, that'll cost money. If we could actually use the developer's money if he posts it to the polls prior to next year, too. So, uh, we just wanna give the board an update, and we'll continue to come back to you as things progress, but if that sounds like a plan, that's the way we'll proceed.
Dan, that wasn't done, uh, that area of the right of way that we're not.
On this side?
No, the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, right there, that area, we're not going encroaching there to even push it further is because of that radius?
Uh, right, the radius is the pinch point right there.
Right, so if.
If we got a little bit of.
Exactly, if, if we went right, right to the right of way without taking their, any of their property on their width, but, uh, the radius, it'd benefit them, because any site plan that that lot ever gets, we're gonna make them go off of the Poly Road, they're not gonna go off the state road for permits, so to benefit that property if it's, uh, a better site distance. So it looks like we're giving up, it looks like ten or fifteen feet that we could, another ten or fifteen feet, just to avoid that pinch on that radius.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely the ability here to, if, we can talk to this person and see if we can widen this out a little bit further. I think that's a great idea. We hadn't considered that, but let us.
Well, yeah, I mean, we might as well go as far as we can, and the further, every foot we get away from that other building, the better the site is.
Okay.
This road puts you out pretty far, Tom. We, we stood there, and you could see almost all the way up fifty.
We still own all that property, dead space now. We might as well gain it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do. Let's, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Dan, what is the, um, dollar amount that the developer of Windsor Woods willing to commit to this?
He's willing to commit twenty thousand in cash right away.
I mean, that's not a lot of money for, for the amount of work it needs done there. I thought you guys had a meeting that they were willing to do whatever we wanted to do. I, I thought that was sent here maybe a month ago or so.
No, no, he, the dev- we had a meeting with the developer, we were gonna develop a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So, what, what he had agreed to, he said, "I'll do whatever you want me to do, but I'm committed to doing the work at the intersection." He's responsible for moving it over at the intersection. That's what he agreed to. We don't have anything in writing with him, Frank, because this was a previously approved plan. He's not even obliged to do anything.
I feel between Range Resources and a developer, I mean, they should upgrade and put substantial amount of monies into upgrading this road here.
I don't disagree with you. I, I, I heard about Range, with, nobody's even, I don't know if Dawn had a chance to talk to them yet, but we'll go over with them and come back to you. Understood?
Thank you.
At this point, I.
At this point, I say we just table it until you have those conversations.
I just wanna give you an update on it.
Yeah. Sounds good. Solicitor's report.
Thank you. Um, we've, uh, spent a lot of time this month working with the manager and the engineer, um, on a variety of issues, including right-to-know requests and appeals, a bunch of P R Ds, uh, reviewing various agreements, reviewing ordinances. Uh, I still have to get to this board, our, uh, draft, um, changes to the rezoning portion of your U D O., um, that I promised you at the last meeting, so that, that is coming, um, giving various legal opinions as needed. Uh, two substantive issues I'd like to report to the board on. One is that the Clement sale property has closed, so that one is now complete. Uh, also, I was in Commonwealth Court on Friday, uh, on the South Point, uh, Crown Castle relocation, so the argument is now done, and we are waiting for the Commonwealth Court's decision on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. So Board of Supervisors discussion of new business on, I forget what day this, last week, Friday, last week? When did, Dawn, when did we have the Lawrence sewage meetings? Friday? Yeah, anyway, Friday of last week, this board met with the Cecil Township Municipal Authority related to the sewage project in Lawrence. Um, we'd been waiting for them to kind of get a second opinion from another engineer. They finished that process, met with us. I can only speak for myself, I would encourage the other board members to speak up, but I think we finally see a light at the end of the tunnel. Um, was very, we were very, I was very encouraged, um, that this was a plan that we could definitely move forward with, uh, to the fact where they are actually gonna start the process of looking into financing, so that they can have some hard numbers for the people in Lawrence and tell them about tap-in fees, monthly costs and those sort of things. Um, the meeting, they, we kind of pushed them on having a public meeting to update the people of Lawrence, so that they could hear themselves from the municipal authority, and they said that once they got that financing in place, they would feel comfortable meeting early, early next year. So I would anticipate end of December into January, um, that there will be a public meeting for the residents of Lawrence about moving forward with the sewage project. Um, anybody have anything else to add? Okay. Um, Supervisors discussion of old business, discussion of proposed Knox Box ordinance. I actually asked for this to be on there, um, sorry, there's a fly. The reason being, um, this was something that had been brought up a long time ago about, um, a proposed Knox Box ordinance. Before we put it on the agenda, it needs to be advertised for fourteen days, is that what it is? Seven days. Um, but before we do that, we need to make sure this board is still interested in moving forward with that ordinance.
Is this for commercial or residential?
Commercial. Jason had provided to me, which I'm sure he can provide to the rest of the board if you haven't already, the, you can stand, he's back there shaking, he said, uh, the actual ordinance, if you want the opportunity to read it, but assuming this board is okay with it, I'd like to get it advertised for seven days, so that we can take public action on, on our November fourth meeting. Everyone okay? Okay. And then, um, I'm gonna speak for Mr. King on this, because he's struggling with his voice a little bit this evening. We've discussed for a long time now the discussion of a website upgrade. Mr. King did a ton of research and, um, came up with a company called Civic Plus. Um, they have a great program, a great platform, that I really think we can work with to make significant improvements to our current website. The catch is, it's a nine-month build-out, so they're estimating it's nine months to a year, um, to get everything the way we want it. Now, the good thing about that is, um, we still currently are tied into a, we have two years remaining on a three-year contract with our current website provider, so we have a little bit of cushion there to actually take the time to really do a good job of, um, building this out the way we want, getting resident input, hearing, and please feel free to speak up if I am saying something that you don't want, um, to be said, or if I'm missing something. But it'll give us the opportunity to build this out and then still have an overlap with our current website provider. Go ahead.
The difference between what we currently have and, uh, what, what is proposed here, I think Civic Plus will bring us into the twenty-first century. I think, uh, um, overall, I, I like to refer to us as a township, being able to put our arms around all of twenty-six square miles of Cecil Township. Features in this, uh, upgrade that we've never seen before. There's, uh, the potential for mass notification. We can, uh, identify certain areas where there may be an issue. We can target them, I can get twenty-two thousand text messages, emails, and robo-calls out in a matter of seconds, as opposed to minutes or, or even an hour. There's the possibility of tying, say, Public Works involved, uh, there's, uh, Parks and Recreation, so really, Civic Plus, Civic Ready is, uh, one piece of the big picture, which is Civic Plus, uh, the parent company, uh, and then we can add other things down the road, but as our township grows, we're gonna grow into it. Now, from a cost standpoint of view, to upgrade what we currently have, um, like, for example, you go online, you see the pictures that we have up there, I cannot change those. I actually have to pay to have those changed, right? So, uh, with, with something like Civic Plus, I can change them every day if I wanted to, every minute if I wanted to. So, um, I can keep that current, I can keep, uh, new pictures coming, coming, videos coming. The potential there is, is significant, and it's virtually the same cost.
I just wanna say thank you, you did a ton of research. Great job. He sent a, um, presentation to the board, um, that we had the opportunity to kind of look through and see, so I'm excited about it. This is something I've wanted, we've wanted for years, so this is something that needs to be done, and I think we're definitely heading in the right direction. Are you guys okay with, um, kind of moving forward with that? We can add the price and the contract to the November fourth agenda? Okay. Awesome. Um, now I'm gonna open it up.
I do have, I do have one item for.
Oh, sorry. Can you turn your microphone on?
I have to make a motion, uh, that we restart the A B B. property environmental work with environmental engineer Dave Perry, to complete his field and lab work for the Act Two clearance. As you know, we're under due diligence clause to, to complete that work, was part of our sales agreement, so I'd make that in the form of a motion to, we, we did ask him to hold up over a year ago, last September, while we investigated that one-point-eight-million-dollar grant, and, uh, so that's been resolved one way or the other, that grant, so we have no reason now to not finish the study. He's eighty percent done with it.
I don't even know, I mean, it would have, it probably should have been an agenda item that we actually voted on.
I would second the motion.
My understanding, he said he had another seven months of testing.
Doesn't that need to be an agenda item?
I don't know what he had, I don't know what he had time was, he's eighty percent done.
I would say at this point, we can add it to our agenda for November fourth. We didn't give the public any opportunity to know that this was coming up, and we can add it as an agenda item on November fourth, give the public a chance to comment, and then take a vote.
Speak now, we have a motion and a second, it's on the table.
We ha- no. We haven't let the opportu- we haven't given the public the opportunity to know that this was even gonna come up this evening.
Gretchen, is that your advice, Gretchen?
I haven't turned down, since I've been on, as the chairperson, a single request for anything to be on the agenda, and I would not have turned this one down, but I wasn't even, this is unintentionally snuck in like this, and I don't appreciate it, so it will be on the, I will make sure that it is on the agenda November fourth, so that the public has the opportunity to comment, and we can take a public vote at that point in time.
There's already a motion and a second on the floor, though. You, you have to give the public a chance to talk about it.
Anybody wanna say anything? Please step to the microphone.
Kathy Pigford, Brookside Drive. Um, we changed chairmans without that being on the agenda, for letting people, residents, know we were gonna change chairmans, so what's this, how's this different?
I would like to give the, the people of Muse the opportunity to know.
We didn't have an opportunity to speak on whether you changed.
Plus, this is in litigation.
This is, this is not. We're talking about, if you have a comment related to the A B B. motion, we'll hear
that. That is the A B B., but I mean, we've been putting that off for so long, we've gotta do something with it, we can't just.
I'm not saying that we won't take a vote on it, I'm saying that the people of Muse and the people that live around it have the, deserve the right to know that this is gonna be discussed tonight. It was not advertised on our website, it was not put out for the public to know. It wasn't even listed under Supervisors Old Business.
But I recall we had a meeting a couple months back, where it was advertised that we were gonna get to speak to someone on the A B B. project, and some of the supervisors canceled him to come. Was that not the opportunity?
That's not true, he canceled himself. He canceled himself.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna go back and discuss, if you have a specific comment. comment.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just curious why that's different. That's all.
Because we didn't cancel him, and that was proven in court this past week. So we did not cancel him, and if, I, I want to give the people who live in that surrounding area the opportunity to speak.
I believe that so, too. I believe that so, too. But I just didn't know what the difference was because before there were things of what should be on the agenda and what shouldn't be off the agenda. And so maybe my feeling is that chairman thing should have been held off for one month, too, to give the residents time to question it. That's all.
Mrs. Pigford, there was a number of times that I had asked for things to be put on the agenda that I was either told no, or, and I, I think there were other members of the board that had the same issue, that we were either told no, or we were blatantly ignored, which is why things came up sporadically. No, I have never turned down anybody's request for anything.
The point is, though, this isn't, wait, wait, this isn't anything new, though. It's, we have a legally binding agreement with ABB. We've been on this for a year and a half. It's nothing new. It's, this motion is, we've already approved to do this work. We have a signed agreement to do it. We just put the, we just put the guy on hold, that's all.
We spent $258,000.
Right. So this is a fairly big.
Okay. Hold on. I'm going to, I'm going to pause you for one second. Let's take, I'm being told, let's take the vote. All those in favor of moving forward with the work, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All of those in favor of adding this as an agenda item on November 4th to give the public the opportunity to speak? Yes?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
In a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed, no.
Supervisor Savavik, can you clarify what your vote was on that first item?
That's 3-2, Cindy.
I said yes and no.
So yes?
So it will be an agenda item November 4th.
You said yes to the agenda item.
Ask her to read, read it out.
Can you, can, the first item that you just voted on, on whether to restart the work, what was the vote?
Two to three.
There was two in favor and three opposed. Supervisor Savavik and Cassiolis were in favor.
Two in favor and three opposed. So are the two of you that were in favor of that aware that there's a meeting going on tonight about the cancer cluster in this area? And that, because the two of you are vocally against the fact that it could have anything to do with drilling, you know, one of the subjects that it keeps bringing up is that maybe it has something to do with ABB property. You don't think it's good to give those people a chance to come in here and speak? Give those people who live in that area an opportunity whose kids go to that school? Come on. Come on. But thanks for letting me speak before you voted.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Or, I'm sorry, any other Supervisor Old Business? I would just ask in the future, that anything, even old business, unless it comes up sporadically that we add it to the agenda so that the public has a right to be heard, or to know in advance that it's going to be discussed. Any other, or, now I'm going to open it up for citizens, general comments and questions.
Andrea Raymer, 24 Pep Road. I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors and Bill over there for getting those stop signs done. We didn't just get one extra, we got two extras. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Even better. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, it's fine.
That's fine. Hold on. Michelle, Ms. Mrs. Cohen, excuse me. Yeah, he's been sick for quite a while.
I, I have a statement. Can you, last time I spoke, I was told I was too long. So I do apologize. I'm going to try to be brief. I have some papers I'd like to pass out to the board. Dave Martens is going to give you copies of what I'm going to speak about. And I also have copies for anyone in the audience that would like a copy, so you can follow along with me. It's easier sometimes if you know what's.
Okay, Mrs. Cohen, I'm going to, this is not related to township business. So I'm going to stop you right there. If you have something specifically related to township business, we'll hear you out. But otherwise, we are not entertaining these.
Not related to township business.
Ms. Cohen, this is not related to township business. If you have something that you would like to say related to township business, we'll hear you out. But otherwise, I'm going to ask you to.
You're denying me the right to speak. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Because I'm asking for you to resign as supervisor.
Miss Moore.
Business part is over. It's a general comment. No.
Right. So comments should be related to township business.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
This is the general comments section, and comments should be related to township business and not personal attacks or political comments.
It's not a personal, it's not a personal. I think from what I understand is that Supervisor made a statement at an official meeting representing, or acting like it was representing the Cannon-McMillan School District. That's her concern. So that is township business when Supervisor reads a statement.
But I don't even have the opportunity to know that this is what was said. Ms. Cohen, I'm not going to, as chairman, I'm not going to allow personal attacks. I wouldn't allow it on myself or anybody else sitting on this board.
I'm not attacking you, Cindy. This is not personal. I did a lot of research on this, and what got me started on this was the fact that in your first statement, that the school board was going to go ahead and do something that we had not been notified. And I was concerned. So I started with the superintendent of the school board to investigate this. It wasn't about you or what you said. But your statement, I took it as literal when you stated the statement. But I later found out that everything in the statement was untrue, that it, that it was lies that you had made up. And I think the citizens of the township have a right to know this. That's all I'm saying. And if you refuse to let me speak, I will tell anyone in the audience they can get a copy.
Ms. Cohen, go ahead.
Speaks for itself.
Go ahead. Say whatever you want to say.
And it's not a personal attack on you, Cindy. I have nothing personal. I've said this to you many, many times. But I do have a problem when, when a supervisor takes an oath to uphold not only the Constitution of the United States, but of the township with fidelity. That means trust and loyalty. And when a supervisor gets up and makes a statement implying that the school board was against the ABB property, and I have a copy here, and the message was sent from Darla Bowman to Ron Flair. I talked to Ron after last meeting, trying to get a copy of the text message, because I wanted the facts. I didn't want any innuendos against Cindy or anyone else. I wanted the facts. Because the statement I read a couple meetings ago, someone said I made it up. I got it off the video. And anyone can go in on Darling Barney's video that she taped, and you can get it. So a person in the township who's well-known, is in the meeting tonight, was kind enough to go on the website herself and make this copy. And this one here is the one that was given to me. It is not one that I, I did. But it was the exact same thing that I got. Videos don't lie. It was off the video. So, and in this statement, Cindy, when you started reading, and this is what was troubling to me, and it's not personal, I will reiterate.
Ms. Cohen, please stop saying that.
Okay, all right. Don't tell me what to do, Cindy. I'm a grown woman. I can speak for myself. So you said, you asked if you could read the statement from Cannon-McMillan. That was a lie, because the statement was not from, it was, it was a text message to Ron Flair from Darla Bowman. And you also said in there that you changed the verbiage in the, next to the fourth paragraph down from the bottom, you said, "We are against the purchase of the property," implying that the school district was against it. That was a lie. That was untrue. And then you said this was by Darla Bowman Monaco. The Cannon-McMillan School District is opposed to the purchase of the property. That was a lie. They were not. So this statement you made was totally against the oath that you took for the township.
They did make that statement.
And I, and here on the bottom, and I, anyone who's interested, you two, Michelle, you can have it. Here's a text message. And all you've got to do is compare the text message to what Cindy read. And Darla Bowman, as a private citizen.
Ms. Cohen, I'm going to give you another minute to wrap it up. We understand the purpose.
Okay. Darla Bowman has a right as a private citizen to make this statement, and she made it. And she has a right to give it to her friend, Ron Flair. And there was nothing untoward about that, Ron. And the statement that Darla made to Ron is totally different from what Cindy read. Do I have a real issue with that? I don't know.
Anna, what, Anna, what difference from the statement that was made to me, that the school district will never send buses through the dump? That entails the whole Cannon-McMillan School District? And the board, that they will never send buses through that road. That's what I was told. What difference from what Cindy or Ron said, or any, I don't understand, what difference is there?
Well, I will try to clarify it in less than a minute. The Cannon-McMillan School District is talking about the children.
That could entail the board, the school directors.
Yeah, but what I talked.
As a whole.
I talked to the superintendent. What you're talking about, the road through there, I totally agree with that concept. And I agree with Darla, and I agree with you on that. But I'm questioning, and I have a real issue, Frank, and I think you would, too, if you look at it on its face value.
When it states the school district, I take the administration.
Well, wait a minute.
Is backing this statement.
But don't you have an issue when someone changes a sentence? Aye? Darla Bowman plainly said, "I am against the purchase of the property." Cindy changed that to read "we." That changes the whole concept of the, the.
Well, it doesn't. I take it as "we" is the whole school district with the statement that was made to me.
And in here, it says, "I already let Frankie Igizio know that the school district will never send our buses through the slate dump even if there is a road." Ms. Cohen, we understand. I think that, Ms. Cohen.
Excuse me, Cindy. That's referring to that particular sentence there. But what I'm saying is you changed the verbiage, and it made it sound like Darla Bowman was, when she said she was against it, you changed it and made it say "we." That's a different concept than you're talking about, Frankie. What you said is, it's in there, and it's true. But the concept of Cindy changing the verbiage, anyone will tell you that reads this and change. Anyone can look at this, and it changes the whole concept of the statement.
Ms. Cohen, think about what you're saying. I was handed that on Ron's phone that evening. Do you think I could think that quickly on my feet to be able to change it as I was reading what was put in front of me?
Well, you did. You changed it.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on. No, we're going to move on.
But I would, I am requesting that you resign as not only chairman, but as supervisor. Has anybody else agrees with me?
I'm not going to resign.
I would think maybe the, maybe the way to resolve this is to maybe make a motion to set up a policy that any document that's read, I mean, we're in this day and age, 2019, email and text messages, anything that's read has to first be given to the township manager or the assistant manager or the solicitor before it's read, just to keep from, from lying to the public that way. So I would make that motion that we maybe have Gretchen work on putting that policy together or setting up that.
You know, this is, this is going on too long. This is going, this has gone on for three months. I don't think Cindy intentionally tried to lie. And I can see your point, but all in all, is it worth three months of arguing over? I mean, that's all this town does, is they're so divided, and it needs to stop.
I want to, no, I.
And I think it needs to be dropped. I really do.
I need, I.
There was no lie. There was.
I have a question.
Hold on, hold on. I have, I want the opportu, I was going to sit here quietly and take this, but I, I resent the fact that you're saying that I'm lying. First of all, I'm not lying. Second of all, Ms. Cohen, you misrepresented yourself at our last meeting when you sat here and said that the school district was going to send a letter. That was, in fact, proven not to be true.
You said it publicly at the meeting. Yes, you did. I'll pull up the video.
Ms. Cohen, we're going to move on. We're going to move on. Michelle, any?
My first question was going to be that, did the township receive anything, as Ms. Cohen said at the last meeting, did the township receive anything from the superintendent saying that this was not true?
I'm sorry, can you, I couldn't hear your question.
Mrs. Cohen said at the last meeting that she talked to the superintendent and his secretary, and it's on video on the township's website, that she talked to the superintendent that he was planning on, he either sent a, a letter, or he was planning on sending a letter. Did you receive a letter?
No. And we, no, and Dawn, please feel free to jump in, but it was actually confirmed that the superintendent did not say that, nor did his secretary. Ms. Cohen called and requested a letter. We're going to move on from this topic. We're going to move on from this topic. Okay, okay. This is public comment, not time for motions. If you would like that to be on the agenda, we will add it to the agenda November 4th.
I would.
That's fine. No problem.
Is it a second?
I seconded already. She heard.
Can you, can you say what you just said? Because they're not going to listen to me.
We're in the public comment section of this meeting, so that means it's time for the public to come up in an orderly fashion and give their public comment on township business. So that's the part of the meeting that we're in.
Or just say you reserve it for Erica afterward, because it's still a public meeting. It hasn't been closed yet, so he'll get a chance.
Right. Right now, we're in public comment. If there's any lingering issues at the end of it, then the chairman can go through any lingering motions that the board may or may not have. But right now, we're in the public comment process, and we should proceed in an orderly manner. There's someone up here who wants to give a public comment.
Thank you. My next question is, at the last meeting, it was also referenced, I think it was either the last meeting or the meeting before, about a lawsuit that one supervisor had filed against three of you. Has that been resolved?
It was resolved this past week.
And can you tell me how that was resolved?
It was dismissed on preliminary objections. So it's no longer. So supervisors Flair, Igizio, and I obtained counsel. We submitted, per the court request, we submitted objections to the case filing, saying basically that what they were accusing us of didn't happen and wasn't true. Supervisor Cassiolis nor his attorney showed up at our hearing on October 1st. The court called the attorney's office and asked where the attorney was, and he said he was not going to be attending. And we received on Thursday of last week, the judge's decision. He was sustaining our preliminary objections and dropping the case.
So basically not guilty?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I also have a question about the road changes to North DePolly Road, and kind of echoing what Supervisor Igizio said. I think that it's, considering that we had a public hearing, conditional use hearing for Range Resources, where they were made very well aware of the conditions of that road prior to the approval of that hearing, prior to the approval of that conditional use. I find it funny that the township's even considering paying for any changes to that road when they very clearly stated in that hearing that they would fix the road, update the road, take care of the road. We make the roads great. And I don't understand why this would even be a conversation that taxpayer money would go into that road.
I think that was Supervisor Igizio's point, and that's why we had asked Dan and Bill to go back to Range and say, you know, this is what needs to be done. What are you willing to do?
I just think that you should dig a little deeper to their testimony in that meet, that hearing, because they testified to the fact that they would do anything to make that road the way it needed to be. So I should, would suggest you go back and hold them to their under oath testimony from that evening. My last question is. Oh, it was for Jack. Can I, am I allowed to ask Jack any questions?
Why don't you address the board, and then if we need him to step in, he can.
I just wanted to say if we had any sort of idea on how much more this new website would cost in comparison to the old one. Is it a considerable amount, or is it?
No, it's really not. Go ahead, Jack. You want to speak up? If you can, sorry.
Currently, we're paying about $3,800 a year for what we have. It's rudimentary. It's static at best. I can't do very much with it. As Supervisor Fisher and other supervisors and I have talked about, I've pushed it as far as it'll go. If I doubled it, which is what they want to do, they want to double what we're paying for, I'm still limited on what I can do. That'll take me up to 70, what, 7,800, 7,600. In the first three years, the website would be 10,000, down to the fourth year, which drops all the way back to 4,000. So in essence, five years down the road, I'm going to be paying less for it than what we're paying for what we have right now. But the, the built-in cost spread over three years will give me the ramp-up charges, basically the programming charges to get where we want. So in the long run, we're saving money.
Yeah. It's a super cool program, too. It gives us a lot of, Jack did a great job in researching this. It gives us a lot of opportunity. So.
I, I just want to say thank you, because my biggest complaint with this township has always been the lack of communication, the lack of documentation, the lack of our being able to find out what's going on and when it's going on. So the fact that even if it doubles our costs, I don't think that I would be, maybe doubled, I don't know. I don't know how I would feel about it being doubled, but it, even, I would never object to it. I think that's an excellent way to spend our taxpayer money. So thank you for doing the research, and thank you for finding such a good program, because I think it's great.
My pleasure. I just wanted to say that, you know, what we have served its purpose. I think it's time, it's time has come and gone, and I think it's time to step into the 21st century.
Right. That's it. Thank you.
Kara Scherden, 58 North DePolly. I just have one quick comment because it came up in today's meeting. Lots of us, well, first of all, I participated in the Comprehensive Planning Committee, and one of the biggest topics that came up was about transparency. And a lot of us have a lot of other demands on our time and the way we make the decisions. Many people. And a lot of us have a lot of other demands on our time and the way we make the decisions, many people make their decisions about whether or not to come to these meetings is by looking at the agenda. And the fact that things that obviously are very important concerns of this community, like the ABB property, are gonna try to be snuck in at the last minute and not put on the agenda for people to come here and be concerned about, is very, very concerning to me and shows an apparent intent to be not transparent. So, I think the last ABB property meeting, this entire room was full, and I think that as a general rule, I think that any, any concerns of any, any significance need to be put on the agenda ahead of time so that people can make decisions about whether they need to be here or not, thank you.
And I'd like to make it abundantly clear that I do not, I control the agenda in that making sure that I, that stuff from last month gets added as needed, but I would never, and I have never, turned anyone down from adding something to the agenda, I feel like the public has a right to know, and it was a pet peeve of mine, not as chairman when you were turned down, and then felt like you were having to surprise people, so there was the ability to get some of this stuff on the agenda. Any other questions, comments, this meeting is adjourned.
Joe's getting up. Joe's getting up.
Sorry, unadjourned for Mr. Petita. Sorry.
Then Cindy, I'd like to finish resolving that if I can.
I got two questions for Sean. Is there a way you can patrol a little bit more on nine eighty with those salt box trucks flying down the hill into McDonald?
Yeah, absolutely, we, we have one of our sergeants, I think some of the community kinda knows, we, if they call down or anytime, um, if I could talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Um, we do get out there as much as we can, we finally got the speed radar signs fixed, and thanks to Bill and his Public Works, we kinda Frankensteined both of them, to be honest with you, to save the township some money, uh, they did a good job, we got them ready for the festival. So, I'll get the signs out there and get the officers out there, and if there's a place to sit, we'll, we'll paint the lines and get the officers out there and force some traffic.
Okay, my next question, do you know when they're gonna be doing the Boyce-Mayview construction?
They have not let us know, but maybe Dan or somebody may know that, if you don't know anything, okay.
I haven't heard anything.
'Cause I was just wondering if the detour's gonna be up Fawcett Church.
Uh, I thought they did talk about that, didn't they?
They did, and then, uh, township managers, you knew so, did, did set up some counters and evaluate the traffic patterns there currently. Right.
'Cause they're speeding on that road now, too, and if it's gonna be the detour, it's gonna be a lot worse.
Yeah, we're aware of that, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, we'll be up there.
Any other questions? We'll pause for a second to let somebody jump up.
Could I address that, just that maybe that would be the fix of having a motion? To have any documents that are read from text messages or emails be put into hard copy form and given to the township manager or, uh, assistant manager or the solicitor. And I believe that that may, that may resolve the issue, that may stop. I'll put it in the motion form, yes.
Second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
No, no.
Are you serious? Why wouldn't you wanna do that? I'm gonna ask that every month for, okay, thank you, why wouldn't you do that?
So...
Mr. Chairman, why wouldn't you want to have the rest of the supervisors be informed as to what's being read at a public meeting?
We're not-
Why wouldn't you?
I was gonna-
It's being sneaky is why, that's why.
Do you want me to answer, or do you wanna keep?
Answer me, please.
It would be a nightmare of administration, that's why, passing stuff around.
So, so you want, you want somebody to read a text, okay, that they got, and the rest of the supervisors are surprised? Okay, and have no clue what's being read? And it would, and it would solve the problem that you're having right now.
You're advocating for exactly what I said, which is that things not come up as a surprise, that they be put on the agenda. I advocated for that, in fact, when Supervisor Cassiolo-
It doesn't have to be put on the agenda, it just has to be passed out to the supervisors, okay, that's all, and to the solicitor.
It has to be passed out to the public as well.
Well, that, that's, that's possible too, but the supervisor should get it. If you're gonna read something off of an email, the rest of the supervisors should have it too. Okay, to me, that's being ignorant, stupid.
Okay, we're not, we're not gonna accept, I'm not gonna be a test personally. All right, any other questions or comments, this meeting is adjourned.